Okay, it is officially seven o'clock by Urbana's official time. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Hazen?
Here.
Hershey?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Okay. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, second by Mary Alice. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Can't possibly want to discuss that, Mary Alice. Can you?
I don't want to discuss it, no.
Okay, that's why you were giggling. I think. Do we have any public input cards? No public input from anybody? Okay. Any presentations? No presentations from staff either? Staff reports? Any staff reports? Who are you people? Okay. Okay, resolution number, I guess, is next up. Resolution number 2019-08-032R. A resolution to approve an agreement, intergovernmental agreement, GIS consortium, base station agreement, information technology. We have Mr. Stanford.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This, so I was before the council a few weeks ago with a different intergovernmental agreement related to GIS and GPS. This is a relatively straightforward agreement. There is a piece of hardware that is located on the university campus, and the purpose of that hardware is to make the GPS signal more accurate in the area. So it has a range that lasts to Urbana, Champaign, Savoy. And so this is a cost-sharing agreement, this is actually a renewal of a cost-sharing agreement, that each of the entities involved, and then the fifth one is the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district. We all make use of this, so we all share the costs. And so we pay every year $1,156.25, which offsets the cost of the base station. That is what we are asking the council to approve an agreement for.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were starting a presentation or something.
Nope.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sanford? Sharice?
Yeah, the main question that I had as I was reading through this was Article 9E, and it talks about sovereign immunity. The university has voluntarily entered into this MOU, M-O-U, whatever, university has as an instrumentality of the state of Illinois maintains its position that it has sovereign immunity and is not subject to the jurisdiction of the circuit court or to the local government processes, rules, regulations, and ordinances. I was wondering if someone could, if you could explain that, that particular part of Article 9 more fully, in the sense that the university can't be held responsible and doesn't answer to the city or doesn't answer to the circuit court and doesn't answer to anyone?
I'm going to ask our legal division to weigh in on this one. That provision merely indicates that because the university is a component of the state of Illinois, that its position is that it's not subject to local rules, and that there's a hierarchy of things. The university was created by the state government, so the university is at a higher political level than any locality.
So even though the university resides within the boundaries of Urbana-Champaign, it is not subject to the ordinances, rules, or regulations of the city of Urbana-Champaign, nor is it subject to the jurisdiction of the circuit court of Urbana-Champaign? It does not have to follow law?
Well, law is a pretty big topic, so there are certain things that, you know, state government would have to comply with and certain things that it wouldn't, but another example would be, we have a federal courthouse across the street, that's federal property and that's subject to federal rules, for the most part. There may be some, some local rules that it has to apply, has to abide by, but by the most, but for the most part, you know, that's federal property, just as the university is-
State property.
-a state entity, right.
Okay, so it's state property, the circuit court is only what, local? It's not state?
Circuit court is state. You know, that, that's the university's position. Doesn't, it doesn't mean that the city has to necessarily buy that, I mean, that's how we resolve disputes in this, in this country. We, we take them to court. So even the state of Illinois can be sued.
Yeah.
So a state, a state entity can be sued as well. So that, that's, that's the position of the university. It doesn't mean that that can't be challenged.
Okay.
The good news is, we don't expect to challenge that in the context of this agreement.
Well, I hope not. I would hope, you know, you know, there are laws against murder too, and I don't expect to murder anybody, but (laugh) all I'm saying is that it just seems, you know, you have your sovereign immunity that, I don't know, it just kind of struck me awkwardly, in a way that I did not expect, you know, I just felt that, I know that the university has its rules and its regulations and so on and so forth, but to declare sovereign immunity is to, I just thought that was just kind of strange. It seems like something that somebody that owned a lot of land could say, that they were, they were, had a sovereign, there's been that kind of issue, a sovereign immunity to any of the laws of the state or the, as you said, circuit court is state, or the regulations or rules of the city in which they may reside or pay taxes or not. So that's why I was questioning that. But it seems like that's moot, not a whole lot that can be done about that.
Mayor Marlin.
It's been a longstanding practice. And it's part of, this is standard language in many of the agreements.
Wow.
Okay.
Clerk?
I just want to point out that tonight you have an opportunity to send four or five items to the consent agenda next week, should you choose to do so. As you look through these, the, the one that should not go would be the budget amendment.
I would also like to add that there were two typos, corrections, that were found and communicated afterwards in the packet, and those will be corrected when it comes before council, should it be moved to council next week.
Okay, we're good. Any other questions for Mr. Sanford?
It's actually Mr. Hess.
Hes.[495.50][495.50](laugh)
It's all right.
Wow.
Mr. Sanford Hess.
Wow, how many times did I say that?
I'll respond to either.
Yeah, okay, my apologies for that. Any other questions for Mr. Hess? Jared?
I have a question, but a bank of motion.
That would be wonderful. What's your motion, sir?
I'm going to move resolution number 2019-08-032R, resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement, GIS consortium base station agreement, be forwarded to the full council with a recommendation for approval and to be listed on the consent agenda.
Okay, it's moved by Jared, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that stands. Next resolution, or, how did you, Charlie, how did you want to do the, the group thing with this?
No, just keep going, just as you hit each one, just consider, you know, if it, if it's simple, straightforward, consider putting it on the consent agenda. There are two, the cannabis tax and the budget amendment are probably two that you want to keep separate, but the others are all eligible, I would think, from my viewpoint.
Okay. Next resolution is resolution number 2019-08-033R, resolution approving a city of Urbana community development block grant program agreement, Habitat for Humanity, project number 1920-CSSP-01, community development.
Hello, we are bringing forth this resolution to be approved. Habitat has applied for consolidated social service funding for a program that offers financial literacy courses to anyone in the community for free, and they have been awarded $5,000. We've previously agreed on their award amount when we were talking about consolidated social service funding, and so we would like to fund them with our community development block grant money. And for our budget, $5,000 from CDBG will go towards consolidated social service funding. Since Habitat's been awarded $5,000, we are bringing them forth as the recipients.
Any questions for staff? Mary Alice?
I actually have a question for Elizabeth, if that's okay. I had emailed you earlier today. So we typically set aside $75,000 for consolidated social services grants, right? Do we expect $5,000 to be allocated by CDBG funds every year?
Yeah, we do, it's been that way for as long as I've been here.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm, because usually when we think about the funds from the city, we think of $75,000 from the, from the city.
Right, and it is $75,000 from the city, it's $70,000 from the general fund and $5,000 from CDBG.
So if we didn't have $5,000 that would be able to be used with CDBG funds, what would we do in that scenario?
Well, we'd either fund less programs or we'd find more money in the general fund to do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Mary Alice, go ahead.
I'll move forward, resolution number 2019-08-033R, a resolution approving a city of Urbana community development block grant program agreement with Habitat for Humanity project, number 1920-CSSP-01, with a recommendation for approval to city council.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice and second by Eric, is that right? Jared?
Would we want to add that to the consent agenda? Mary Alice?
Sure.
You're the motioner.
I, I, yes, to add it to the consent agenda. There we go.
Any discussion on this? Bill?
Just, I think we also had a note on that, that section one, there should be inserted some wording that says up to $5,000. Earlier in the memo, it said it's contingent on the HUD funding, so up to $5,000 seems to be the way we'd handle it in this part, and then if we need to find more money in the general fund later because we don't get HUD funding or something, we'd have to do something else. So I guess section one should say that an agreement providing up to $5,000, $5,000.
So is that a motion or just a discussion? Comment?
If I could just inject, and Sheila, or John, or Alyssa, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an allocation of money that we know we have. I think the, the issue that Mary Alice was saying was, what if we didn't have that? And that was more hypothetical, and this is an actual allocation, is that right? Yes, getting a nod.
Anything else for discussion? Comments?
I, I don't know if that satisfies Bill's concern, but I just want to share that.
But just on page one, under dispersment, says, "Funding in the full amount is contingent upon the city receiving sufficient CDBG money. If the grant funds are discontinued or reduced for any reason, the city's payments to the sub-reception may cease or be reduced without advance notice." So I don't know, I guess it's all included in there.
So typically, by the time we've received our allocation from HUD, we will, we would have had these all approved and signed so we can get people going in the fiscal year. That's, that's kind of, that's language that has been carried over for years, and it's basically, you know, if for some reason, if something ever happens, we don't get our money from HUD, they sign that agreement, and, but, you know, we've gotten our allocation, we've got notice of our allocation, so we're, I think we're in good shape.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? And we had a motion, right?
Yep.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that resolution stands. Next up is ordinance number 2019-08-047, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, by adding Article II, Section 22-16 through 22-19, municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax, city finance, I believe.
Yes. So there, there has recently been a lot of interest in recreational cannabis, so before we dive into this, I want to clarify that our purpose tonight is just to decide if we want to impose a tax on recreational cannabis sales. Those sales are permitted by default unless the city would elect to disallow that. So there are also several related issues that are going to be addressed separately, so let me mention what those are just very briefly. The location of any additional dispensaries would be addressed before any additional dispensary was located in the city. That may require an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Updating language in the city code regarding cannabis possession and drug paraphernalia will be addressed before the January 1, 2020 date, when recreational cannabis sales begin. And also, the issue of licensing social consumption in public spaces can be addressed as needed. So most of the public input that we've received has been supportive of allowing the sale of recreational cannabis. As you know, we held a listening session last week, we also had some emails subsequent to that. Of the 10 comments that we received, seven were in favor of allowing sales, three opposed. Also, as I mentioned in the memo, a November 2016 advisory referendum on legalizing the sale of cannabis resulted in 11,863 yes votes and 3,804 no votes. So the state allows municipalities to impose a tax of up to 3% on recreational cannabis. Currently, the tax would be effective in September 2020. However, the Illinois Municipal League has advised us that there may be an amendment or a trailer bill to make that tax effective in January, when the sales begin. To allow time for the Department of Revenue to prepare to collect this tax for us, if that occurs, you should file an ordinance with the Department of Revenue in September. Also, as you know, we've been working on closing a substantial budget gap for the last two years, and next, next budget year would be our third year of planned adjustments. While we'll update the financial forecast this winter, there's little doubt that we still need to address a significant gap, and our preliminary estimate is a gap of $875,000. To the extent that we can use new revenues, such as the cannabis tax, to close that gap, we can avoid reducing services to our residents. We currently have one medical cannabis dispensary in Urbana, which is NewMed on University Avenue. NewMed will be permitted to begin selling recreational cannabis on January 1, 2020. They may also apply for a second license, and have indicated a desire to do that and locate a second dispensary in Urbana at some point. The legislation also allows for an additional license in the Champaign-Urbana area. Initially, however, we expect that the only Urbana dispensary will be the current NewMed facility on University Avenue. Based on a review of sales data from the state of Colorado and estimates provided by NewMed, we believe that recreational cannabis sales would be in the $5 to $10 million range annually for the first dispensary. Imposing a 3% tax could generate revenue of $150,000 to $300,000 from the cannabis tax alone. In addition, the city would collect state and home role sales taxes of $125,000 to $250,000, so total revenues resulting from these sales could be in the $275,000 to $550,000 range. I also want to point out, since we're talking about a new revenue, which is often a difficult subject, recreational cannabis is an entirely discretionary expense. Nobody's going to be obliged to pay this tax. A portion of the tax will also be borne by non-residents who purchase recreational cannabis in Urbana. Those factors may make this preferable to other taxes on nondiscretionary items or taxes that might be borne only by Urbana residents. So that's, that's a summary. I do want to point out that we have Keith McGinnis here in the front row, who is associated with NewMed, which is our local medical cannabis dispensary. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Mr. McGinnis is happy to answer questions too, he's actually the owner of NewMed.
Okay, who's first? I'm sure we've got some questions on this one. Mr. McGinnis, would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
Keith McGinnis, Principal Officer, owner of NewMed. To address, and first of all, thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and talk in front of everyone. Last week, we had a representative, Sean Alberts, here, that was here for the public comment session. I will be here tonight, and Sean will be back again next week. NewMed currently has three different dispensaries throughout the state of Illinois, one here, one in East Peoria, and one in Chicago. East Peoria and Urbana seem to be going along the same way, Chicago's going a little different because a little more political views on what's taking place up there, from a zoning issue more than anything else, but we currently have a medical facility up there as well. With Elizabeth that addressed a little bit, the site at 105 East University, by new statute and new law, we are allowed to add recreational adult-use cannabis to that site along with our medical facility that's currently in place. I don't know how many are familiar with the current facility over at 105 East University, but the city of Urbana has treated us real well, and I don't think we read any negativity in the paper about it at all, or come across on radio or anything like that. It's ran real well, we haven't, haven't had any issues on the whole, and we'd like to thank the city for, for that part of it as well. I'm happy to let you know I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and also to congratulate the city of Urbana for, for one, doing all their homework on it. I was telling Elizabeth earlier, it's a very nice write-up, I'm sure other cities, far away from Urbana, so you can get your tax money, would like to see that write-up as well.
All right, well, thank you for coming, we're all very happy to have you here, and I'd be surprised if there isn't a whole lot of questions, so. I think Bill had his hand up.
Yeah, one of the public comments that struck home with me last time is that the new sale of marijuana for adult consumption could still be used by people who are self-medicated and didn't want to go through the process of, of getting the permission to, getting the license for medical use or have their personal privacy invaded in that manner. So I wonder if there's actually, I noticed in our, actually, language that we want to put in the code, we don't mention the word recreational. I don't think the state uses that term, but we do have recreational in our whereas clauses, and I'm just wondering if there's, is there a definition of recreational?
They're using, they're using adult use.
Adult use?
Right.
Okay, I'd prefer in our whereas clauses to, I think we could just delete the word recreational. But that's, yeah.
I think the reason it was written that way was to distinguish it from medical cannabis, which would have no sales tax, but certainly, we can revise the whereas clauses.
Yeah, I think just for consistency and, and kind of recognizing, I think, that comment last week, it struck home with me that it's, we shouldn't really consider it as just recreational, that there's a broader use category there. So personally, I'd be in favor of eliminating that, I don't know, whatever anybody else thinks. As far as the tax goes, I think, I don't really have any questions about it, 3% is pretty minimal. We don't currently have an extra tax on medical marijuana, right?
No, you get the city tax and the sales taxes, which you currently have.
So that's 6.25% or something, that's a regular. That was the only question I had.
Would you clarify that, if you have a card, what tax do you pay?
You're paying your state tax and the city tax is, is all that we pay on the medical card. There, the adult-use cannabis can go as high as 35%, and it's based on the milligram usage of the product that's bought by an adult user, so it can go as high as 35%. And the city can get 3%.
Go ahead.
I'm going to clarify, when, when he's talking about those percentages, he's talking about the adult-use cannabis, but if you have a prescription, I believe that those sales are treated as a prescription drug, no?
Correct.
I, I guess I thought that if you had a card, that you were tax-exempt because it was a medical need, that's what my thinking was.
No, there's tax added to every sale.
Oh, okay, it's just less?
Yes, considerably.
But it depends on what you're buying?
Right.
Okay, that's more complicated than that, so. This kind of reminds me of when concealed carry passed, and there were just all kinds of complications and a lot to learn and interpret, but, go ahead, Bill.
I didn't think that it was possible to prescribe medical marijuana, I thought you were certified to have a condition, and then you qualified to get a card, but is there actually a prescription?
The way it works right now, if you have one of, I believe it's up to 40 ailments right now, and you go see your doctor, and the doctor only has to acknowledge that you have that ailment, and the doctor's willing to sign a piece of paper sent into IDPH, the Illinois Department of Health, saying that they recognize and they acknowledge that you have that ailment, you can get a medical marijuana card.
And those medical marijuana sales are currently taxed at 6.25%?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Sharice, go ahead.
Yes, I was just wondering, as far as the recreational slash adult-use marijuana, how would that, how would you go about dispensing that? Does a person have to be a member of NewMed or, or something to that effect, or is it going to be like a head shop, you know, where you can go in and get your, everything that you want?
But to distinguish between the two, from a medical standpoint and a recreational standpoint, adult use, medical right now, when you come in at 105 East University, you show your medical marijuana card. That is then passed through to the back, through security that you must go through, and once you get to the back, they have your, your card, and they check your ID one more time to make sure you're, you're current, because they do expire after a year, and you have to renew. On the recreational adult-use side of it, what happens is, when someone comes in, we're going to check their ID just to make sure that they're 21.
Okay, so it'd be like buying liquor?
Pardon?
It'd be like buying alcohol?
Yes, because medical, we keep HIPAA records and everything, and we will continue to do that. Recreation, we're not allowed to keep any record other than that they're qualified as 21 and older.
Eric, go ahead, sir.
So I've been trying to read some of the papers on this very complicated question of the relationship between legal cannabis and crime rates, and legal cannabis and addiction rates. And I haven't made myself an expert, but what I have read indicates to me that there is no adverse effect, it may even be, especially with respect to the crime rates, may even be a beneficial effect. So I just thought I'd put that into the public record as a non-expert, but made an attempt to understand.
Mary Alice?
So I'm trying to understand the difference between the recreational and the medical. If you have one facility, will it be divided up into two different sides, or will those people intermingle? How, how will geographically, basically, it all be set up?
We've been asking medical patients as they come in, would you be offended if there's a recreational sale going on right next to you? Most of them are very comfortable with what they're doing because they've been at the store enough. If someone's new, they've only been there once or twice, they'd say, you know, I'd still like my privacy. So one of the questions I personally asked at Medical Cannabis Association of Illinois was, how are we going to distinguish, once they're inside the point-of-sale area, recreational versus medical? And they said, you have no requirements by law, the only thing that distinguishes between the two is the way the tax tables are set with, inside the system. Because a medical patient and adult-use patient, adult-use cannabis user, they're, they're actually getting the same product, the only difference is the tax, except on the medical side, remember, we keep HIPAA records, so we have their records of everything that they bought, since they've been a patient at that place. We are personally going to probably turn the corner a little bit in our facility and add a couple more POSs, where we can divide off, possibly by just a, a wall or something, to allow medical to go to one side and recreational to the other.
So in terms of HIPAA, you had referred to HIPAA, I think, you know, whenever you go to Carl or you go to your other doctors, there's like a line, it says, stand behind this line and let the person in front of you go, so that you don't get overheard, right?
Right.
So do you have to abide by those same rules?
We have dividers at the point-of-sale systems.
Okay.
I guess we could, we are, we have a minimum required, how close they can be to one another. You can, you can usually, you know, hear someone else with their ordering or whatever, it's, it's not that private. But the other thing we've done to over- But the other thing we've done to overcome that is, when a patient comes in, we approach the patient from the outside before they get to the POS with the menu and that for the day, and they can give us their order. So when they walk up, we already have their order, which goes to the back and fulfilled that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Bill?
Do you take credit cards?
Not yet.
Is it cash-only?
It's cash-only right now. ATM cards are, can use inside dispensaries. They're looking heavily into the credit card side of it. And the next question is, everybody's gonna ask, what are you doing about banking, right? Well, hopefully, the banks are going to allow this to be processed in our banks in the state of Illinois in the coming future, near future, we hope. Personally, we're lucky, we have a bank. Not everyone has a bank yet, so we only deal in cash right now.
And under the new law, what's the maximum somebody can buy at one time?
Recreational side, there, I don't know the, there is a amount that they can, they're limited to. But out-of-state buyer are limited as well. So if someone comes in from Indiana and buys here in Urbana, they're limited how much they can buy. Right now, medical side of it, when you start off and you get your medical card, you can get up to two and a half ounces every two weeks. And you can increase the limits. And that's an awful lot. But there are a number of people that increase their limits, and we go back, that we're not talking about all smoking flower marijuana. Right now, most of it, this came from 70% down to 50%, where most people are doing tinctures, oils, gummy bears, and stuff like that.
And I think for the medical, they also had several requirements for video security, is that right? Is there?
We are on camera 100% of the time, we're open.
Is that continuing in the new law?
Yes.
For the new sales?
Yeah, security will be the same.
Sharice.
With the adult recreational cannabis, will you also be selling edibles and so forth?
Same, same as medical, same as adult use, so it'll be the same products. It's the higher tax on one side than the other.
Okay.
I could ask 100 questions about this, but I won't, because it's a very complicated matter. But anybody else have any other questions? Anything else to present to us, sir?
There's a whole bunch of information, but we don't want to be here too long.
Right.
I hope I've got the basic points across to you that we are hoping to accomplish.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, if there's nothing else.
I'm gonna stick around till after the meeting, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
That'd be great. Keith?
Yes.
Oh, Jared, good.
That's all right. I was just gonna make a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion, please.
I'm gonna move ordinance number 2019-08-047, and ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, by adding Article 2, Sections 22-16 through 22-19, the municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's moved by Jared, second by Eric. Any, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Question, I know that Bill had suggested some language, were you, was that gonna, I don't know if that's part of the motion, or are you gonna? And then there was some, a small correction suggested by our attorney as well in the ordinance.
Yeah, are we moving this with a suggested language, or as it was originally?
I mean, I'd be open to that, but I think that the removal of that language, Kurt, is that gonna affect, as you say, the legal sufficiency of that ordinance? Should we strike the retail word from, or recreational word from our whereas clauses in the, in the ordinance?
Yeah, that won't affect the legal sufficiency. But it's still understood what your purpose and what your intent is.
Well, I think that staff can just go with that recommendation, that we change that language, but I don't think we need to amend that motion. What about the other three points that you listed? Do we need to, do I need to amend the motion mentioning these points in order to create a legal sufficiency for it? Or staff just needs to know that that's what they're gonna make these small adjustments?
Right, the final, right, if, as long as staff understands what they're sending to the city council for the final vote.
Okay. And I think the motion's good as it stands.
Okay, so Jared motioned for that as it stands, Eric second to that. Is there any discussion on that? Mary Alice.
I just first want to thank the public for coming out last time. I'd like to thank NewMed for coming out and giving us some more information, certainly information that we didn't have beforehand. I would like to kind of emphasize the fact that we are not going to be taxing cannabis any more or any less than we already are for packaged liquor. So it is in the same vein, and I'm in support of this. There are some other questions that we're gonna have to figure out, as Elizabeth had outlined quite nicely in the memo. I strongly encourage people, if they want to know more information about this, to go online. All of our material is posted online, that would include everything that Elizabeth talked about. In addition, we also have a kind of a fact sheet on adult use of cannabis that was included in our packet, which might be beneficial for the public. Last but not least, I think I would like to emphasize the fact that public spaces is pretty broad. And I realize that we are not voting on public spaces right now, but I think that that perhaps might be an even lengthier conversation. So public spaces is something that we need to think hard about. Obviously, we don't, at this time, prohibit people from smoking tobacco in, on the street. And I am assuming that we won't be doing the same here, but I don't know. So I just want to kind of throw that out there, is for us to think about in the future, how we're gonna talk about public spaces and regulating it. At the moment, the memo only talks about bars, but public spaces can be also parks, it can be in the parking lots, it can be lots of different places, so.
But you can't smoke in a bar or a restaurant, so it's kind of, kind of alluded, right?
True.
So we need to define public spaces?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
This is not my area of expertise, and I'm sure that community development will help us through that. But when, my understanding of the cannabis law is that when they're talking about public spaces, they're not talking about people walking down the street or in parks. They're talking about licensing public consumption in defined areas like, like in a bar, in a place that's designated for that purpose.
Mayor Marlin, I believe.
Mary Alice does make a good point. There are many questions that we still need to answer, and this will be rolled out in a series of steps over the next year or two, as we work our way through this. But I did want to let people know that the Illinois Municipal League, if you go to their website, the Illinois Municipal League has now an entire section devoted to cannabis, the new law, FAQs, and a whole lot of information is being put there. So it's a really good resource for the public to use, as well as, as city staff and I are also referring to that constantly. So Illinois Municipal League.
Any other comments? Bill?
Just one other thing I thought of, I think it was a comment last week, or in the news or something, that there's been an increase of ingestion of edibles by pets and children. And I was just curious if there's some kind of child-proof container that everything is distributed in. I happened to be in Las Vegas earlier this year and saw how it was packaged there, and they did have something that required an adult to open. I wasn't sure if it was something they just did there, so you could try to get it on an airplane, or if it was something that is more common everywhere, I don't know. Do you guys use some kind of child-proof thing?
The packaging is child-proof, and in a lot of times, adult-proof, it's very hard.
And you use that, the comment was that the package is a child-proof and a lot of times adult-proof. Do you use that for both the edibles and for the?
Or everything.
Everything, okay.
What takes place is a package.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Sorry.
What takes place is every cultivator that grows product and either takes it out through the extraction process or smoke process, they all have preventative features built into the packaging, where, like I said, seriously, it's sometimes hard for the adults to get open. But each one of those products that come from a cultivation, they have to go through a certification process before they're delivered to us and packaged. If any of those packages happen to be open, they must be sent back.
Okay, so people just have to remember to leave it in those packages and not leave it out on their coffee table and things like that?
Right.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Any other questions or comments about it? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the resolution stands as in its original format. Yes, sir.
I'm feeling really poorly, and to avoid, you know, to spare you the appearance of me just suddenly putting my head down in my computer, I'm gonna excuse myself.
Okay.
But don't take that as, I love you all.
It's gonna be okay?
You gonna be okay, Eric?
I'll be, I'll be okay to get home.
Okay, next up is ordinance number 2019-08-048, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 1. The word I can never say, omnibus, and from Finance.
So this is the first budget amendment for the fiscal year 20. This is a fairly routine budget amendment. The majority of items in this budget amendment is related to changes in timing of expenditures and, in some cases, revenues. But there are two things I would like to point out, is, the first thing is, this we don't normally do. This is a re-budget, the first thing, this is related to the timing of property tax receipts. So earlier this year, the county started using a new software to handle property taxes, and they were having some issues. So as a result of that, the first two distributions for the 2018 levy was late. So we'd receive that in fiscal year 20. And so that also affected our, our police and fire pension funds payment, payments. So we'd receive that money in fiscal year 20, and then we also make the payments to the police and fire pension fund in fiscal year 20. But not in, usually, normally, we would receive that money in fiscal year 19, so I just want to point that out. The second thing is related to the West Green Street right-of-way improvement. This is a requirement of the development agreement that the city council approved for the development of the Urbana Landmark Hotel. This will be, this will be paid out of Central Tiff Fund. But because, but because Central Tiff Fund is still early in the life and has not grown to a level of sufficiency to cover these expenditures. So, and the cost for this project is expected to be $50,000. So a transfer of $50,000 from Tiff Two Fund will be used to pay for this cost. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Mary Alice, go ahead.
When we originally approved the Lincoln, the hotel redevelopment plan, the amount that was proposed to us was $30,000. So I'm wondering why, A, it's $50,000, and B, is that a hard number? Meaning, do we actually have, have this all bid out?
So I don't think it's a hard number. I don't think that the work has actually been bid at this point. But I think that there had, that economic development staff and public works staff have done some further work to better define the project and estimate the cost. So we'll spend what we have to spend to do the job, but this is the best number we have at this time.
So should we wait and find out what the actual amount is gonna be, if this isn't a bid right now? I mean, it was, it was a lot more money, right? So we went up $20,000 from $30,000. And so my question really was, if we're moving this money right now, that must mean that we have, we're getting ready to do the work, and we have a bid to do it.
I think it's been folded into a larger contract, but we can get you the details on it for next week.
Okay, thank you. My second question had to do with the re-budget of the city maintenance, re-budget of the capital improvement project. So I was curious if we have a specific project in mind? $64,000, 60, 65?
Yeah. And that, that is for the, it's right there, is for the city facility improvement project.
So I think there was a fairly lengthy list of smaller projects that add up to that number. And so I'm sure we could get you the list of what's included there. There's also some money budgeted in FY '20, so, but these are scheduled projects. I guess that's what I was trying to figure out. I believe this is part of the planned projects that came out of the first phase of the facility study that identified deficiencies that needed to be addressed.
That's fine, but you don't have to give me the list. I was just curious why, why we had $65,000 moving from that. And then, last but not least, and I suppose this is a question for Carol. I see that there are two rebudgeted items here at the bottom for fleet technology services and fleet machinery. I mean, I'm just gonna ask the same question. Does that mean that we are purchasing both the machinery this year, I assume? And then the technology services, is that Mr. Stanford Hess's line there?
Can I answer that next week? I don't know the details right now.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, any other questions? So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send this ordinance, let's see, find my thing. Okay, the ordinance number 2019-08-048, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 1 to city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Jared, second by Bill. Any discussion? Sharice.
Shouldn't we wait for, well, I don't know. So that Carol can answer Mary Alice's questions regarding the re-budgeting and the, with the technology services and machinery?
They'll tell us before we vote next week.
We could always send it back to council, right? Or committee?
But they'll tell us before we vote on it next week, Sharice.
Okey-dokey.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that stands as in its original format. Okay, next up, ordinance number 2019-048-049, and ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Green Street between Lincoln Avenue and Race Street Public Works.
Good evening. Back in 2008, the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan showed bike lanes on Green Street from Lincoln down to Race. In 2016, the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan was updated, and those bike lanes were reconfirmed. Through the process of the development of that plan, there were several public meetings that showed bike lanes on that section of Green Street. With the multimodal corridor enhancement project, otherwise known as the M-Corps Project, that project shows the removal of parking on that section of Green and the installation of bike lanes and two travel lanes. There were several public meetings throughout the multimodal corridor enhancement project where those bike lanes were shown to the public. The key component of those bike lanes is that that project will allow a bicyclist to have a dedicated space that will run from downtown Urbana to the UBI, and then over to the downtown Champaign, and vice versa. That will be the only connected route that we would have between all of our communities when we're done. Prior to the Urbana Traffic Commission, staff notified all adjacent residents, business owners and property owners of the intent- owners and property owners of the intent of the city to remove parking at the Urbana Traffic Commission meeting. Nobody showed up at the meeting. There were no comments at that meeting. The Urbana Traffic Commission then in June approved the recommendation to remove parking and forward that to city council. So before you today, you have an ordinance prohibiting parking on Green Street between Lincoln and Race for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions.
Jared.
When would that be effective, Craig?
We would, if council approves, we would wait and do that with the construction of the project.
So not, not until construction was actually going to start?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Mary Alice.
So how many spaces are being proposed to be removed right now?
There aren't dedicated spaces, but there's slots of, of space. When you count all that up and say divide it by 18 to 20 feet, it's about 49.
About 49 spaces. And are they generally full?
It depends. We had, have done periodic counts through time. I would say during the day, yes, you see quite a few people park there, specifically when school's in session. We think, what we can tell is that we think that people are parking there and then walking to the U of I campus. There is a lot of multifamily or, you know, apartment buildings throughout there. In the evenings, we see less, but we've seen some occupancy there.
So there's currently no restrictions? So you don't need, it's not a permit parking, right?
Right.
There's no overnight restrictions?
That's a good question. I think you can park overnight. I think there's a 72-hour rule, though.
So you can't park for longer than 72 hours?
72 hours, yes, yes.
All right.
And then the first block west, the first block inside of Lincoln and then the first block inside of Race currently has no parking. But when we did our research, we couldn't locate an ordinance, so that's why we went on ahead and included those blocks in this current ordinance.
I'm not opposed to this. I would say that we would probably need to keep an eye on those neighborhoods that are just north in terms of the parking. Right now, I think, is it at Illinois or is it High Street that, and then south that has permit parking? I can't remember.
It's High to the south.
And then Florida.
And, yeah, yeah.
So of course, this is going to impact everybody north of High Street. So if you can't park on Green Street, then it's going to go to Elm and then it's going to go to Springfield and et cetera. It's just going to be going up.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Bill?
I know I attended some of the M-Corps meetings. Seems like it's been a couple of years now where this was discussed. So I think the fact that nobody showed up, the traffic commission just meant that most of their questions were answered or they were resigned to the fact that they were going to lose their parking by now. It seems like there was some discussion for accommodations for UU Church or some other, like, there were some accommodations in the M-Corps design to improve parking for some of those, wasn't there?
We're, we do have a drop-off area for the, for that church and also for the Presbyterian Church.
Okay.
Yeah. That way they can, folks can at least unload, unload particularly, you know, people that need, need those.
Thanks for being so proactive and getting the M-Corps design and comments out there early so that people could address and be prepared for the change.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Jared, as usual.
I'll make a motion. I'll move that we send ordinance number 2019-08-049, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Green Street between Lincoln Avenue and Race Street. Are we going to move this to the consent agenda? No, okay. With a recommendation for approval to city council.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, second by Charisse. Any discussion?
Do you have one question?
Go ahead.
Regarding the, the residents that live on Green or the businesses, is, is the city at all going to assist in how they can restructure parking for those areas or for those residences or whatever? Is there, are they going to be required to do something like that if they're losing parking spaces on Green Street?
We, we had not planned to do that. When the, when we've removed on-street parking in the past, one of the things we do look at is, do they have existing parking, you know, within their property? I can tell you that I've looked at each and every parcel. And although they may not have a driveway in the front on Green, they have parking in the rear. A lot of them have it with a, with a, an alleyway in the back or there's even parking that comes off of the adjacent side streets, north and south, where there's a fair amount of parking. I can't see a single location throughout this corridor where anybody is losing parking that they would need on the street exclusively, meaning they, that's all they have. They, they, they may have a long driveway and there's, there's a few of those where people park. But we're not shutting anybody out, so to speak.
Well, well, then, well, there not being any parking on Green Street in, at all impede people from moving off of their own property to get onto Green Street to drive, you know? An example I can think of is like in, on Springfield Avenue in Champaign, you have it, all this traffic going down and anybody that has a driveway, you know, like, come out when you can, kind of, kind of. Is that, do you anticipate that being any kind of problem?
Actually, I think it'll be probably easier because if you're on the north side right now, there's driveways where there's parking adjacent to the driveway that you can't, can't really see so well when you exit out.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so.
It'll be clearer.
It'll be clearer for, okay.
Yeah, this will also help the bus, bus pad locations throughout the project where the buses can, you know, move over easier than they currently do now.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, ordinance number 2019-08-050, an ordinance authorizing the dedication of right-of-way 301 North Race Street Public Works.
Hi. Good evening. This ordinance is for dedication of right-of-way at 301 North Race Street. That, or that parcel is owned by the city, so we're giving ourselves a great deal here. And the purpose of that right-of-way dedication is just to kind of tidy things up and create a uniform consistent right-of-way along both Race Street and Griggs and provide the, or address some narrowing of, of the right-of-way there as shown on the plat. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? I guess not. Do we have a motion, then?
I'll move ordinance number 2019-08-050, an ordinance authorizing the dedication of a right-of-way regarding 301 North Race Street, be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval and be added to the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And second. So moved by Jared and second by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that ordinance stands and is moved to the consent agenda. Sorry, what? Oh, okay. Last one on here and then I have a couple, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. A couple of public input cards after this. Ordinance number 2019-08-051, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Section 2-4, comma, 2-27, comma, dash, and 2-28, Administration. And this is by a city clerk.
This is fairly straightforward, just simply, the first item is a, is making the public meetings a part of our code, consistent with the ruling from the public access counselor. We haven't been asking for, for people's addresses when they state their name. And then for rules for deliberation, we've gone ahead and added to the agenda template a presentation section which, which we've, which we have in committee and have found useful there, so we're suggesting we add that in there. And then we also go ahead and, and fill in for the consent agenda as well. So again, just a small tweak in, in the existing template. And then finally, for Section 228, just simply removing some ambiguity, making it clear that for committee of the whole, the mayor doesn't vote, which got sort of muddled as we made changes over the past 40 years.
Okay, do we have any questions for Charlie? Mary Alice.
So right now, in Section 2 hyphen 27 is the rules for deliberations, which is where we've added in the presentations, consent agenda and regular agenda. I was looking at today's agenda for the city, at the council of the whole, sorry. And we have public input before presentations. And is this order, is this the order that we are proposing for city council?
We can do it either way, but usually those council presentations are invited and want to get them, get folks in and out. And sometimes those also lead to public comment afterwards. So, but we can do it either way.
I'm just, I didn't know if we were going to have the same order in the city council and in the council of the whole meetings. I'm just trying to figure out if we should have the same here. I guess maybe that's a question for council.
The, the committee of the whole agenda is a little more fluid. And I think it's just tradition that it comes out this way, but it could be either way in the committee of the whole. It's not dictated by the, by the rules.
Okay, any other questions? Charisse.
I guess the question I would have, because I'm, I don't know, the ordinances or whatever as well as everybody. Section three, number three, under Section 2-27, where it says, "Whenever it shall become necessary for a number smaller than a majority of the city council to compel the attendance of absentee members in order to constitute a quorum." I guess I'm just trying to understand, you know, because life gets in the way. Could you explain that to me?
I think probably better our attorney, but basically, I think that's if we have repeated absences with no communication from a council member. Okay. You can.
Because I know you asked earlier, like in the summer, for any dates that you thought that people might be absent from.
Right, we try to accommodate vaca, you know, life happens, like you said, and so we try to accommodate vacations and so on and, and make sure that we have a quorum for city meetings.
Okay.
And so, so, but in the event that somebody goes incommunicado, which hasn't happened for, in my memory, on council, this is code that's left over, you know, it's been here for probably since, you know.
No, I was just wondering if there was like a certain amount of, of times that a meeting is missed or something like that before you start charging them the, the MBA, $200?
As far, as far as I know, we don't have anything like that.
You know.
Kurt wants to chime in.
Yeah.
No, and this is specifically for the purpose of obtaining a quorum. You might have absent members from time to time, but you usually don't have any trouble achieving a quorum so that the issue doesn't come up. As long as you, you have a quorum, you can conduct business. This is triggered in order to constitute a quorum, where you, you're having these meetings and you just don't have enough people here to transact any business.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's when this, this is more of, more or less a last resort. It wouldn't just be, oh, somebody's on vacation for three weeks, let's, let's hit them with a fine. That this, this is, the purpose says to constitute a quorum. Well, you have a quorum tonight.
Right.
So you wouldn't have a reason to go after an absent member and seek, seek a fine against an absent member because you had enough people tonight. And you had enough, you know, you, you almost always have enough people. Or the mayor has the foresight to cancel the meeting when, if she, if she knows that there's four people want to take a vacation, there's no, no need to have that meeting. The other thing I would point out is there's a separate section of the code that allows electronic attendance. So even if you have a member who has some reason that he or she can't be here, we have an alternate means where that person can attend this meeting electronically. We have, you know, a system in place to, to accommodate that.
Mm-hmm.
So that would, that would alleviate one of the problems.
Okeydoke.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move ordinance number 2019-08-051, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Sections 2-4, 2-27, and 2-28, be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval and be added to the consent agenda for the council meeting next week.
Moved by Jared and second by?
Second.
Mary Alice. I was just trying to predict it. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. And then I have two public input cards. The elders, Melinda Carr, would like us to know that she is continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. And Bishop King James Underwood would like us to know that he is still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues. And if there's nothing further, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Hurrah. Thank you.